So I was sharing with some of my friends in the audience this evening that this is my once a year opportunity to hold on to this and to start our meeting, so I just wanted to share so you could see it. And I call the first meeting of the new year and our organizational meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Connolly.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazzard.
Here.
Ms. Hyrens.
Here.
Ms. McCosker.
Here.
Superintendent, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please stand for a moment of silence followed by a presentation of callers and pledge of allegiance.
Sir, permission to present colors?
Present the colors.
Present colors.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America
And to the republic for which it stands,
one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right face. Forward, march.
We had Cadet Captain Galu, Cadet Captain Mims, and Cadet Captain Yee with us, a great presence. We don't always have that many folks representing our ROTC programs, but that was a really great showing for this evening, so thank you to the Colonial Forge Caller Guard. At this point, I'd like to entertain a motion for approval of agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? This time, I would like to ask for nominations for chairman of the school board.
Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Holly Hazzard as our next chairman.
Ms. Hazzard has been nominated as chairman. Are there any other nominations for chairman? Hearing none, nominations for chairman are now closed. The nomination is for Ms. Holly Hazzard, chairman of the school board. Those in favor of Ms. Hazzard as chairman, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unopposed, the motion passes unanimously. I congratulate Ms. Hazzard for being appointed school board chair. And I have to relinquish the gavel.
But you get to send it down.
Okay, we do that.
The official apple gavel. Moving on to election of our vice chair, at this time, I would like to ask for nominations for vice chairman of the school board.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Scott Hyrens as the vice chairman.
Scott Hyrens has been nominated as vice chair. Are there any other motions or nominations? Hearing none, I will close nominations for vice chairman. All those in favor of Scott Hyrens as vice chairman, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mr. Hyrens. Now, we move on to one of our most important things that we can approve tonight, which is the appointment of our clerk. The superintendent has recommended Roberta Yearing as clerk of the board. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second, third, fourth.
Yes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We again have our super clerk, Ms. Yearing. Thank you very much, Ms. Yearing, and thank you for agreeing to stay with us, just as much. Okay, moving on, we will be moving to the adoption of the administrative authorizations for 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our appointments to committees. If the board wouldn't mind entertaining just a moment for this, how our board... We are supposed to nominate individually, however, in the past, when we have gone through and we've really sort of had our slate of candidates, we would... It does go quicker. I think there... People have expressed some interests. I know, Mr. Hyrens, I believe you had said there was a committee you were considering not staying on, just I just want to see where the vacancies are.
Right, because I currently serve on the finance and budget and the joint working group committee, and those are both pretty... Can be pretty active committees. I would be more than willing to vacate my seat on the joint working group, the three-on-three with the board supervisor seat.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Egan, did you have any comment?
I'd be willing to take on Mr. Hyrens' seat on the three-on-three or the joint working committee.
Okay. How we like to have our committees, if we can, is to, as we are getting into governance and things, is having two somewhat seasoned members and then a new member join each of our standing committees. It helps us sort of pass along the information. I know that there are two new members have expressed some interest in some of the committees. Mr. McCosker, not to put you on, but you are a sort of more seasoned member of our finance and budget, and I believe, Ms. Egan, if you wanted to take on that role on three-on-three, would you be... Would you want to stay on the finance and budget committee?
Given that they're both very active, I would prefer just to stay on the three-on-three and give up my seat on finance and budget.
Okay. So, Mr. McCosker, would you be willing to... And Mr. Connolly, you expressed some interest in the finance and budget. Ms. Decatur, I think you had expressed for three-on-three?
Mm-hmm.
Or joint schools, I always say the wrong thing, but...
Interchangeable.
Interchangeable. So, hearing that, let's go through each of the appointments, but I just figure we can go through them and then vote as a block? Or do we need to vote in... Yes, we can vote as a block. The first one would be the Stafford Education Foundation, the chairman and the designee. I would like to continue in that unless there's somebody jumping forward to take that one. Okay. Commonwealth Governor's School, Mr. McCosker, would you would like to continue in that, I believe?
I would, unless someone else is dying to jump in.
No. And then, would we... Right now, the alternate is Ms. Egan. Is there... Do you want to continue as the alternate there, Ms. Egan?
Yes, but Mr. McCosker is... He's spot on and he's there all the time, so I'll stay on as long as he continues his exemplary attendance.
There you go. Regarding Parks and Recreation Commission, we do have a non-voting liaison. I believe they meet on the third Thursday of the month, I believe. Is there anyone jumping up and down for Parks and Recreation?
I'm not opening my mic to volunteer for that one, because the difficulty with that position has always been, it's a non-voting position, it's good to... That we have membership that we can provide input and take output from them to report back here, but it's always very difficult that we actually can't vote. Last year, we had talked about working with the board supervisors about reinstating that position, and I think the planning commission has one as well
They do.
...as voting positions. Years ago, I think they made it non-voting about four years ago. Prior to that, it was a voting position. Can we add that to the joint working group committee's agenda? We'll load that agenda up now.
Give it the old college try one more time.
To see if we can encourage them to make that a voting position so that it's one with more appeal to serve on. But to our new members,
Yep.
Please don't be shy about volunteering for a committee like that. It really is a... Can be a useful opportunity to understand the relationship between Stafford County Public Schools and the Parks and Rec division of the county. And we do have some things that we are doing, I think, fairly well, including some... I want to call it lawn maintenance, but grass cutting, right? With Parks and Rec, so it is good opportunity to get input and output from that, at least in that perspective.
Anyone went Parks and Rec?
I can step out, take it for the team.
Okay, well, thank you very much. I can try and be your alternate if you get in a real pinch. But we do have some meetings on Thursday, so it always depends. The private day school study committee.
I would like to stay on that one, actually, with... We're losing a very valuable member of that committee, and I'd like to maintain some institutional knowledge going forward when we have those discussions, so... You're also interested in that, too. Would you like to be my alternate?
I'll be your alternate.
Okay. And actually, if there are afternoon, we can kind of tag Team Holly, and I did that for a little bit.
I mean, you know.
Good.
And then, on that one, I don't even know... I don't know if the board of supervisors even voted that committee back today.
What, the day school?
Yeah. I don't know if they did. I don't know if they did.
I don't know either.
So, I don't know if we want to say, bring that up even at three-on-three. Are they continuing this discussion? I mean, you know where we are on that one. You know, just... If you all would like to... And then, I know, Mr. Hyrens, since that is in your district as well, I mean, I know it was made as a committee of two. Do you want to be an alternate, or do you want to make sure? I mean, it's up to you.
No, it really doesn't matter greatly to me. Not that the work doesn't matter and the fact that the day school is currently located at Drew Middle School. But I will probably attend if I ever... If there's any information about the facility itself, just to be aware. But outside of that, no.
Excellent. All right, so CIP, Ms. Egan and Mr. McCosker, alternate. Is that still... Still good?
Unless someone else wants to jump in. I don't see any takers, so yes.
All right. Career and technical was one that I was willing to step down. I think Mr. Connolly expressed some interest for that one, so, Mr. Hyrens, would you consider staying on as the alternate?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Fine and performing arts, I would like to take that one on, moving from alternate to main member, if that works. Gifted, Mr. McCosker and Ms. Healy. School health, Ms. Healy said she would be willing to stay on. Ms. Decatur was special education?
Yeah, I can do that.
Great.
Awesome.
And technology, Mr. Hyrens?
All right. All right, so our standing... Should we vote on those first, Madam Clerk?
Do... Keep going, okay. Standing committees for our joint working committee, that would be Ms. Egan, Ms. Healy, and Ms. Decatur. I would be willing to serve as an alternate, since many times I do attend those meetings. Right. Finance and budget, Mr. Hyrens, Mr. McCosker, and Mr. Connolly. I would suggest for the governance committee, which is our other standing committee, that we wait to have our membership for that until after our retreat on the 21st, because then we'll kind of know what the charter of that committee perhaps might be, and people can then express an interest at that time. Is that all right with the board, or would... I mean, if you want to... It just seems like that kind of makes sense. All right. Head start, oh, that's in September, so that's already taken care of. And the legislative committee, right now, Mr. Hyrens and myself serve, and, Mr. Connolly, would you
Sure, happy to.
Be happy to join us? All right. Is everybody somewhat clear on everybody here and what... You will get a... As long as our clerk is on it, that's fine. So, at this time, would anyone like to make a motion to accept the slate as we just went through?
Uh, sure. Move to approve the committee slate, Madam Chair, as discussed?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, welcome aboard. Thank you, everybody, for getting involved in our committee structures. The next one is our... The 2017 school board meeting dates, times, and special activities. Is there a motion for discussion? Or would you like to discuss first?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Ms. Hazzard, you put out an email or a message about the July date, was it? Is that reflected in here?
No, I just was going to have this discussed with everybody. On the current calendar right now, we have a meeting that is on July 11th, which would be one week after July 4th, when many people are gone. It seemed like that's kind of a quick meeting for us. School will have ended, potentially, they'll have been... The learning summit, it just seems like... It's not bad to meet, but if we, as we know, as we get further in the summer, sometimes we find needs or personnel matters we need to discuss. Dr. Benson, would you be opposed to maybe moving that a little more, just to give staff even a little more time to react to anything?
It's the board's consideration then, is to move it a week later, is that...
That was the thought, so it'd be moved to the 18th? Is that...
I don't see any significant issues that would...
I just think, last year, it seemed like it was right on top of July 4th. Many people were gone.
It was, and then, I think we ended up having to have a special call meeting because we had some personnel stuff that... To prepare for the new school year and for the new members, when you see one meeting in July and one meeting in August, cross your fingers. So, the chances of that stand is not likely.
So, I would propose that we move that to the 18th. With that said, moving to the 18th, the August meeting is August 8th. Do we think that that should be a week later as well? Or, Dr. Benson, I really look more to your input. I just... If you want to keep it there, I just am trying to...
I would ask the board, try to keep that one in place
Okay.
So that we can get as many teachers on board
Oh, okay.
Prior to the... Our new teacher institute.
Oh, that's right. Okay. All right, so, we've made it... Why don't we... If you would maybe make a substitute motion to just substitute the 11th, the 18th for
Motion to approve the 2017 school board meeting schedule with the 18th substituted by the 11th.
Reverse. Oh, yes, now you're right. Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, so we have our calendar without one change. Thank you, everybody. Moving on, we have our Virginia School Board Association Code of Conduct for school board members. We have these, we will all... We will be signing it at the... At the end of the meeting, I won't pass it through right now. Are there any comments, or can we go ahead and approve the code of conduct, which we will then sign later this evening?
Move to adopt the code of conduct?
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, now, we've gotten through all the administrative stuff that sort of starts our year off. So, next, we will move on to our citizen comments. This evening, speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes will be allotted to speakers. We have a three-color system. When you get to yellow, you have one more minute remaining. When it gets to red, your time is expired. You have five seconds to wrap up. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment, which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in policy 1113, public complaints. If anybody wishes to speak, feel free to come forward and can line up behind the podium and just come forward. Oh, hold on. I think I have some signed up. First, we'll have Dana Brown, followed by Maya Wallach, and then, anybody else who wishes to speak? If you would just line up behind the speakers, that would be great, and we'll just move forward. Ms. Brown?
Hi, I'm Dana Brown. I live at 41 St. Williams Way. I've only got three minutes to talk to you tonight, not enough time to tell you the whole story, only the barest outline of what happened, but Dr. Benson can fill you in on the rest. I'm going to tell you about an abuse and hazing incident perpetrated by staff against our students by, from what's left of what I call the old guard, people that used to think that they ran things, much like a mafia before Dr. Benson got here. What happened was not an accident or an oversight, but a deliberate malicious act from a longstanding culture of hate. Someone needs to be accountable for this. I'm tired of you just rearranging the deck chairs and transferring people around when there's trouble. I want to know who's getting fired over this, whose deck chair is getting tossed over. CGS students at North Stafford High School had their internet, phone, and email service cut off and then deliberately withheld for almost three weeks, from November 12th to the 30th. This was entirely unnecessary, but there was a more sinister motive behind this. Had I not found out and intervened, staff had planned to keep them disconnected through January, up to three months. Little background, school system experienced a fiber cut back on November 12th, knocking out service to a handful of schools. Fortunately, we have a backup line that can switch internet traffic, so we don't have to have a disruption in service. The switchover was done quickly, and users were back online, all except the CGS kids at North. Keep in mind, the rest of the school at North was working just fine. It was only the CGS kids that didn't get turned back on. Staff must have thought it would be a great prank to keep them offline for an extended period and made sure they did not have service for the CGS parent information night on the 17th of November. They were unable to demonstrate their broadcast capabilities, which is the cornerstone of CGS program, broadcast as distance learning. Additionally, during this three-week outage, our students lost an astounding 27 broadcast lessons. That's 27 blocks of classes that our North Stafford CGS kids didn't get to participate in or hear the lecture. We were also scheduled to host some of these lessons, having a rippling effect on the other counties participating, and we didn't show up. Staff embarrassed the division in front of three different counties. Staff members were notified in writing and verbally that there was no service, but now they're pretending that they didn't know. I have documents and witnesses to prove otherwise. For almost three weeks, they claimed they were trying to find a fix, but just hadn't figured anything out yet. Then came an offer that for $30,000 to $60,000, CGS could buy their service restoration. This was for a piece of equipment that they didn't need. That's called extortion. Service was only turned back on when I called to find out what was going on, then they were back up within hours. They were simply routed through Mountain View like everyone else was from the beginning. This also isn't the first time that something like this has happened. Crimes against the governor's school by various staff has been a culture for years. Now, they've upped the ante and they're using kids. So, I'd like to know who is going to be held accountable so this finally stops. This has been going on for way too long. Thank you.
My name is Maya Wallach. I'm a sixth grader at Dixon Smith Middle School. I'm here to speak about the unfair treatment of girls due to or out of deep dress code policy. Girls who have never been in trouble before are getting in trouble now because of what they wear. About 20% of the girls I know have been in trouble because of the dress code. Most have been wearing leggings when they got in trouble. When was the last time the dress code has been reviewed? According to my research, it has been 15 years. I request it be revised. I have a couple of suggestions to keep in mind for the reviewing of the dress code. One, identify the purpose of the dress code. Two, ensure the dress code is gender neutral. The current dress code has seven... Has 17 bullets with five items that target girls, F, I, L, N, and O, six items that are just nonsense, D, H, J, K, P, and O, five that are gender neutral, A, B, C, E, and G, and one item that targets boys, which refers to sagging pants. Nobody really does that anymore. That used to happen when my mom went to school, but now, not so much. Three, students should be involved with the creation of a new dress code. Students should be able to have a voice in it, and it impacts us. Also, there should be a student committee about what addresses this school board, because everything you do impacts us. Since I'm a science person, I will call this the scientific method journey, or just the SMJ for short. I have taken you halfway through the SMJ. We have addressed the question, does our current dress code target girls? I have provided you with some reach... Research. You can easily see the hypothesis. If you target girls with an out-of-date... With an out-of-date dress code, then girls will be sent to the office... Will be sent to the office for dress code violations more than boys. Now comes the experiment or collection of data. I want to do that. I want to collect the dress code data. So... And then, share the findings with you. So, I hope you allow me to finish the SMJ. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the board? If not, I will go ahead and close public comment. I will move on to our board member and board committee reports. Does anybody have a committee report or advisory for any of their committees? Mr. McCosker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to give the gifted committee report. We met yesterday, and I always appreciate the folks that come into the gifted committee and the... And their people that come and they give their time and they give their effort, just like all the folks on all the committees. And I know we've put something out on... Out there on our website and in other places to help get new people, new blood in the system, and of course, the gifted committee is not... Would like some new blood as well, and we're excited about starting a new year. First, we'll talk about the Commonwealth. The CGS is Commonwealth Governor's School applications. They were available online the 2nd of January, and they are due the 14th of February to either the gifted resource teacher at your school or Ms. Melanie Daniels here at the front office as the gifted point of contact. This year was a significant early promotion of this, so we're hoping that, you know, we have middle schools, at least they have some folks that are applying to this school. And when folks aren't even applying to the governor's school, the statistics just aren't right, you know? When you have 1,000 kids and no one applies, we might have an issue there to look at, and I hope... And I hope we'll take a better look at some of this in order to take care of these kids and get them in to the right... The right place. Construction is January 14, 16, at Spotsylvania Mall. This community is a one... It's a wonderful... This community is a wonderful community event, where students use canned goods to build creative structures, and allows gifted students to use their abilities and give back to the community, and it benefits, and it benefits the Fredericksburg area food bank. Destination Imagination, the challenge workshop is 21 January, and it's at Dixon Smith High School, I'm sorry, Dixon Smith Middle School, and approximately 30 DI teams from Stafford will have the opportunity to participate in a variety of instant challenges in preparation for the regional tournament in March. And, you know, we, Stafford County does wonderful on this. Ms. Daniels, what did we have? Did we have a national team go to Nationals last year?
Seven.
Seven teams went to Nationals last year. And that's a big deal. Where were, where was Nationals held? Tennessee. So we have a wonderful tradition here at Stafford of going to Nationals and doing well in this region and the state. And so, let's, let's keep that going, and I'm sure it's going to be a wonderful night for board members to get down to Dixon Smith. We'd love to see you guys come down for the DI challenge.
What was the date, Mr. McCosker?
Twenty, it's 21 January, and I think, I think Ms. Daniels also is looking for, what do they call them, adjudicators or? Adjudicators. Folks that are judging the teams, because the teams will get challenges, and they'll have to, kids will have to think really quick about what to build a bridge, or to different types of challenges, and then you're the adjudicator to see if it's done well. Talk to Melanie.
We can go before or after the retreat.
Yeah, well, that's true. Well, we may, we may be running up on the retreat times on that one. You're right, 21, because that is our retreat at the hospital. Right. Okay, well, I think that's it for the gifted committee. That's it for my report.
Anyone else? I would just also just urge people to get involved on our advisory committees. We're always looking for new members, so we'll move on to that. All right, board member reports. Ms. Egan, do you want to start us off?
Just as a comment, I'll keep it short and sweet. Happy New Year, everybody, and we have a very busy spring ahead of us, the rest of this month and the springtime. We're looking at redistricting, so we've got a couple of town hall meetings, we've got some workshops going on, so anybody who's affected by it or not, come on out, we can use your input. Thanks.
Mr. McCosker, you want to?
Could I have a minute? I'm spinning here. Computer's spinning.
Mine was too. Mr. Hirons, you want to start us off?
I don't see Mr. Hirons in the audience tonight. See how shooting Bambi or something along those lines?
Oh, terrible, terrible.
Sorry, Scott, get back. Providing meals for your family. At any rate, I had received a couple of constituent inquiries about an odor at Drew Middle School. Something that's kind of been going on, they had fixed it, and now it's kind of creeping back in. And I wanted to give, pass along my thanks to him, because I received the comments. I got in touch with Dr. Hannah, Tammy Hannah, there at Drew Middle School principal. She said Hirons office, or Silly's office has already been on it. They had a smoke test scheduled for, I think it was done yesterday, and I got some sort of preliminary information, I guess, back from the school staff there. Drew Middle School, it's showing its age. I think it's probably something that may come up that we might have some budget implications, so just be aware. Drew, our oldest school, is showing some age. Last week, I spent some time with Dr. Benson at Gale Middle School. We both worked in a sweatshop building or fabricating shirts, but Dr. Benson and I got frustrated and organized all the workers, unionized them, and walked out.
[laughing]
I think both of us would thank Mrs. James there at Gale Middle School. I unfortunately had to leave. I know Dr. Benson, I saw him carrying his guitar, I believe going to a music lesson there within the school. I was sad I had to miss that, but thanks to the Gale Middle School staff for helping us. It was a really fun opportunity and interesting, and the kids were there were really great. I wanted to bring something to the board, board's attention, and your guys' input. We had scheduled a public hearing for the, and Sheree, I apologize for not giving you the heads up on this also. A public hearing for the Falmouth Ferry Farm redistricting for March 9th, that's a Thursday. I found out, found out I have to be in Boston the morning of March 10th. I'd like to push that public hearing back one week to the 16th. I know we don't have all our calendars in front of us, and we went through some things at night with our calendars. I would like to try and make this decision tonight. If we could take a look at our calendars, maybe bring it back at the end of, unless anyone has any issues. We can maybe give communications office direction, look for the 16th, if there's some other conflict, please let us know as soon as we can, so we can, and to, to my constituents or the folks that are affected by that redistricting, I apologize, this is completely my fault that this has to be rescheduled. I know we want to get this information out there as much as possible. We don't, we don't want to be accused of, you know, hiding, or setting a meeting, changing the meeting, trying to hide a meeting. So that's why I want to make this decision as early as possible, and we can make sure it's publicly noticed as early as possible and as loudly as possible for the change. It'd be the 16th I'm looking to schedule it on.
So what would, what would the?
7:00 PM, I think, was typical start time for public hearings.
I think what would be the impact?
The 6th.
Because what would be the impact going forward for board approval? I'm just trying to move it real far.
It would move it back. The next meeting would be, the next school board meeting would be the 28th. I thought, Ms. Yaring and I had talked before, I thought there was, it wouldn't have any effect, but it actually would. It'd move it back one meeting to the 28th, which we would be able to have it, I assume, on our meeting for information, and then for action on April 11th.
And that would be before spring break, right?
Right. Or if we, you know, I don't know if, what, we just, redistricting, I think it's smartest to have it on information and action, but with this one being relatively small, and seeing how public hearing goes, we may be able to do our information and action one night.
We just need an inclement weather date as well, so.
Right. Just because we never know.
Before, we had the Thursday and the Friday, Friday.
Yeah, we can do that.
I'd be, it'd be Saint Patty's Day, and you'd have to dress as a leprechaun.
Everybody wear green.
If it rains. Or you can bring your bagpipes and.
Who says I won't be playing the bagpipes someplace for Saint Patrick's Day?
That's right.
Cutting into my side job.
Yeah.
Tax people, I don't get any money for it.
So is the pleasure, does that date change? Is that acceptable to the board that we can go ahead and make that change?
I don't have any, I don't have any issues.
Okay.
With the, so it'll be the 16th and the 17th, right?
Yeah. The meeting, yeah. I apologize again for not catching this beforehand. It's something I knew about, but didn't actually have a solid schedule on, and it came up that was scheduled.
I think the earlier we get it out, so I think that's great. So Sheree, okay, we've got that. All right, so we will, we will do that. Anything else?
My final comment is thank you to all of you for your vote of confidence, for filling Ms. Egan's seat as vice chair, and thank her for her time as vice chair. I'm sure the circle will come around again, and you'll get, receive the punishment again in the future.
[laughing]
Threaten me with a good talking.
All right, Ms. Decatur.
Short and sweet. Happy New Year. No new updates. Had some great time off. Hope you guys did too. Before we jump into this wild season of big things happening, been visiting some schools, and I just want to say, getting to know all of the principals in my district, and as I've been going to the schools, the one thing that's just been outstanding that I just want to make note of is the students and the student, teacher, administrator interaction is phenomenal. We've got some really great students that have been just surprisingly wonderful at all of our locations, so that's all so far.
Mr. Conley?
I'll go even shorter, and it's good to be back, looking forward to this year, and I just want to, I say so far that I appreciate the diligence that the board has put towards plotting out the next couple of months, and the challenges that we're going to have in our workload, but being specific with our dates and our times and our goals, and it's just, it's been a good learning experience, and I'm looking forward to it.
All right. I'll try and make mine short and sweet as well.
Do you want me to go first?
Oh, you, that's right. Go ahead, Mr. McCosker. I forgot. I dumped you.
So, real quick, welcome back. Hope everyone had a well-rested and holiday, and happy new year. Thanks, Mr., first of all, congratulations to Mr. Hirons for vice chair. He's worked hard on this board, and thank you so much for your work, Ms. Egan. You get, you get the pain again, Madam Chair, so congratulations to you all on that. A few things, and Mr. Hirons brought it up. Thank you so much for, you know, continuing to work on Ferry Farm. You know that the Ferry Farm issue come up initially, when it, when it probably should have been done with the Conway Elementary School, and we kind of pushed that back because we wanted staff to be able to work on that long bus ride. They worked on the long bus ride, they fixed it, but we still had the issue with the Ferry Farm students, about 52 students in England, this is the England Run students. We still had an issue with them not feeding into the correct middle school. So everyone in Ferry Farm feeds into Dixon Smith, and then the kids from the England Run kids, they feed into Gale, or are supposed to feed into Gale. And so, you know, it's just, it's just kind of ripping the kids out of the community, and we want to put these 52 kids back in their community and go, and so they'll, they bond with their kids, the young kids that they grew up with in elementary school, and they can all go together, whether that be Hartwood, or whether that be Falmouth. So I just would, would like the board to, you know, make sure we keep, you know, there's been a couple of news articles and so on written about it, but let's just make sure that we keep our eye on the ball and take care of these 52 kids. Even if we have to do it incrementally, we take care of Ferry Farm, and then if we have to move to Margaret Brent next, we can do that. So I'll have some more data points if, when it comes up for redistricting, if we want to rehash those points, but I hope we don't have to. So I wasn't going to mention the Commonwealth Governor's School thing, issue tonight, but I'm very upset about this, this issue. I'll let the board know. I'm not, I'm not happy at all. You know, the, I mean, we have, we have kids at North Stafford High School that if this, if these allegations and these FOIA documents all pan out to, to point to a finger, we have kids at North Stafford High School that basically sat for weeks and weeks without proper technology and, and everyone else around them. The lines went back up, but allegedly, it was purposely kept, cut off to the, to the CGS students, and it emanates from the building leadership all the way up to this, this office here, the central office, allegedly. I mean, and we're talking, I mean, I just don't know where to start with that. You know, back in my old job, we used to call that institutional discrimination. When I used to investigate that, this, this hatred for, for our program, we've got to get away, and it's not Dr. Benson. I know he learned about it, and senior staff learned about it when, when everyone else did, but this is, this is, this is really, really bad. This is really bad.
Okay, final, final comments. I would like to thank my board members for allowing me to serve as your chair for another year. Ms. Egan, thank you for everything for last year, and I look forward to you serving in all the great ways that you serve our board this year. It's a great, we have such a great group of people. Mr. Hirons, welcome aboard. We're going to have a, a great year. I know we have lots of challenges also in front of us. I am so pleased to serve with these six people. Just in case, Ms. Healy is en route with her daughter. She is in transit, was unable to call in, and her daughter, the way, they have a long commute unfortunately, and it isn't going as quickly as they would like to continue down the road. If anybody has ever traveled with sick children, you know what we're saying, so she would have liked to, but other circumstances overtook. But like I said, these six people along with me, we are pleased and ecstatic to be your board members, and I really enjoy working with us, and I look forward to our retreat, where we get to work together some more, learn more about each other, and about our goals going forward. I would just like to say, we're going to have a great year. We know that there are always challenges, but we can always do it in a civil and wonderful way. We can use our C5W as we go forward, and I'm just looking forward to this, this year. And like I said, one of the greatest things we all get to do is to go to the classrooms and meet with our students and see our wonderful teachers, and all the staff that make sure that we have a great school system. It is such a delight and such the highlight, so I would say to our new board members, do those things, because some days it's hard, but that really makes sure that you stay focused on, on what's important, which we do. So, moving on to Dr. Benson, superintendent's comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, while inclement weather could potentially negatively impact our programs and schedules at any time during the course of the year, we particularly experience it when we have lower temperatures and moisture move into the area. And I just, I want to reinforce that we have a whole team of folks that help us make the decision as to whether we should close or not close, or have a, a late start. We have our own staff that's out checking the roads and the parking lots. We work very closely with emergency management services, local government, the sheriff's office, to get a sense of other issues that are out there. We triangulate forecasts, which is one of the more difficult things for us to do, to, you know, when you've got an event that is coming into an area, and you're trying to figure out at what time is it going to have a negative impact in the area. So we don't use any one site, we use multiple sites, and we actually get reports from local government that are very specific to, to our area. And I have to say, I very much appreciate that. In a previous position, I was out on the road collecting data, and I had a very small number of folks. Here, we have a lot of people that are helping us do the right thing, and that, and that number one thing is to ensure that our students and our adults are safe, coming and going from, from school. So I just, it's, you know, we're at that point of the year where we're probably going to see some more, but just I want to remind folks that we have, we have a lot of folks that are looking out for our young people and the adults in our school division, and we are committed to making the best decision that keeps everybody safe, day in, day out. And that's it, Madam Chair.
And we all have our fingers crossed for pretty decent weather, so.
64, what, Thursday?
That's right, 64. Moving on to consent items, do we have a motion to approve consent items?
Motion. Second.
It's been moved and seconded regarding consent. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Consent carries unanimously. Moving on to our two action items this evening. Our first item, 6.01, regarding the North Stafford High School project. I was going to, if the, indulge the board, we only have one member up here who has graduated from North Stafford High School, so I was going to ask if Ms. Decatur would like to make that motion.
I did, yes. Let's see, what are we doing here? I, not only did I graduate, but I studied in that library, so I do make the motion to approve funding. Do I need to read this whole thing?
You can just, yes, why not?
Hi, I'm new here. I make the motion to approve the funding for the renovation of the North Stafford High School library.
And is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Any further information needed?
Just real quick, the, so with this, we are, we are not right now approving the renovation of the adjacent commons, right? Or are we?
I'll ask Mr..
That will be an add alt, Mr. McCosker. So the amount that we're funding here is for the library proper, and we'll, we'll bid any expansion into the locker area as an add alt, and we'll only be able to do that if additional resources are made available.
Okay, and, and the reason I was concerned about that was the, right below it, we have, you know, that's really hot, really important topic, that we want to make sure we can fund, and, okay, good.
Mr. Hirons?
On those lines, I'd remind folks that the next joint working group meeting is scheduled to take place there at North Stafford, which we're hopefully getting the board supervisor, members of board supervisors eyeballs on the area, so they can really appreciate. I know a couple of members have been over there, and a classmate or a fellow alumni of North Stafford there has been advocating this, the, the improvements in that other area as well, and hopefully, we can convince them to. and hopefully we can convince them to ensure that's funded.
Great. All right. Any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I know Ms. Healy would have loved to have been here to vote for that one. Moving on to our second item, is there a motion?
Motion to approve 6.02.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion regarding this item?
Well, I just like, I just think it's a good, it's a, you know, for this, for the folks that don't know about this item, it's, you know, approve the proposed teaching and learning summit scheduled for '26 to '29, 2017. So it's, in effect, it's a teacher learning summit, and this is, as it was briefed to me, this is going to be a wonderful four-day interactive opportunity to collaborate with fellow teachers and leaders in the district. And it costs a couple of dollars, but, you know, this is, we as a board had, for years, had talked about making sure that we, an important, an important part of our professional development was putting some money back into the folks that are touching the kids, and the folks touching the kids are these teachers. And, you know, they need training too. They need professional development too. And just having them go on their own through the summer, out of their own pocket, or us not paying them, I don't think that's right. And so that's why I know I supported it and the board fully supported, you know, this opportunity. We may even come take a look now, Dr. Benson will kick us out probably, but we'll probably want to take a peek and see what's going on there in June. But I'm very excited for this little step forward for those hard-working teachers out there that really make a difference. And to be honest, let's, it's not us, it's not us that make this one of the better school divisions in the state.
I would just like to echo what Mr. McCosker said. This is a wonderful way for us to begin and to continue to implement the professional development. We are unique with our C-5W. We have so many things going on. I have gotten to hear the speaker, who I would assume may be coming to this one, and he's great. Every organization I've ever worked in, when we would get together and learn together and explore new ideas, we would go back refreshed to our workstation. Sometimes mine was a cubicle, but there was something really great in that, and we would like to bring that into our team. And I think that this is one, one more way we can do that, and I hope going forward we will continue to support this as a long-term investment every year that we will be continuing this type of training. All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's move on to our information items. 7.01 regarding the superintendent's proposed amendments regarding insurance and retirement plan. Brenda?
Good evening, school board members. Very briefly on this, in doing an internal audit with our health insurance consultant, this became aware to us, and so we are trying to be proactive to correct something in our policy which currently states that we pay the full premium for some of our most highly compensated employees, which is in, is not in keeping with the ACA regulations currently in place. And so what we must do is just have the individuals who are currently receiving this benefit simply, you know, kick in the, what the other employees are paying for their health insurance so that we will remain in compliance with this regulation. And so we are just proposing to take the one section out of the policy which states that we will provide it free of charge, and it affects a very low number of employees. And they have all been made aware of this going forward, so.
So essentially, it's compliance with.
It's a compliance with the regulation, yes.
All right. Are there any further questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Come back.
One second. Is there a level of where this starts? Is there a certain salary? And does this only affect, is, well, what I'm getting at, are there any classroom teachers that are involved in this?
No, no. It is not. And the way the policy was written previously, it only pertained to the superintendent, assistant, and associate superintendents, and so those are the individuals who would be impacted.
Yeah, so my second question is going to be, well, who is it?
Yeah, that's the only red line I saw too.
If it was a yes.
No, that was the only red line I saw as well, and that was a good question though, just to make sure, yep.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to 7.02 regarding our middle school program of studies and middle school course catalog. Looks like that's Dr. Strike coming forward. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Dr. Benson, members of the school board. On behalf of Instructional Services and Learning and Organization, I want to present to you the proposed middle school program of studies. I'm also going to credit Melanie Daniel this evening, who has been working along with us at putting together and making sure that we have stakeholder buy-in as we update our program of studies, not only our high school program studies that was approved, but also this proposed middle school program of studies. In addition, I also want to credit Mr. Tom Nichols, our Chief Secondary Academic Officer, for giving us the opportunity to review our draft, to have input and feedback from all of our middle school principals and their counselors. So we worked during a middle school principals' meeting on our, on this draft that you have attached to your agenda item this evening. As you know, this is my first year in the school division, so this is my first middle school program of studies, and I want to remind you all that the folks, some of them sitting behind me and of course out in our schools watching the board meeting tonight, have worked very hard with the middle school program to make sure we have increased opportunities for our middle school students. So a couple that I want to highlight you that is not, that are not described in the agenda item. For example, over the last two years, we've now have the opportunity for two world languages available in every single middle school. And in addition, every middle school student has the opportunity to access band, choir, orchestra, theater arts, and visual arts in every one of our eight middle schools. So I'm not going to mention some of the other agenda items that are noted for you in the agenda item that are part of the middle school proposed program. All right, any questions?
One that popped out to me is geometry. Is that, is geometry still being able to be taught in every middle school without students having to travel?
I believe so. Mr. Nichols, is that true?
Yeah.
And then the only other thing, foreign language, we talk about it every year, and we have gotten some input and some information about foreign language and how that's going. I'm almost thinking I'm asking for another presentation at some point of really how it is going. How many sign-ups do we get? You know, kind of what does the data look like as far as what kids are requesting with foreign language? How many kids are we not providing, you know, their requested language? Like, because it's essentially Spanish, and then the next most popular requested one is how it occurs, right? As long as the staff, and a combination of staff availability. What I'm looking to kind of get is, you know, is French the next second popular one, but German is, you know, two students behind French in the request, and we couldn't possibly teach, make it arrange, you know, I just want to get a sense of, are we missing anything? So what I'm, I guess I'm getting at, I apologize, I think I said this three times.
It's okay.
Is, what do the requests look like? I think that is one data set that we really haven't seen clearly. We have gotten in our class reports and information about what is being taught at what schools. But I would like to see, you know, what kind of requests we are getting.
And you're looking for that on middle school and high school?
Middle school, middle school.
Just middle school.
Just these middle schools that, you know, and we are trying to expand the opportunity to have at least two languages. You know, this was a big deal two years ago when it dropped only Spanish, and then we're, you know, through your guys' hard work, we found ways to be able to at least offer two languages in every school. And I just, it's really a sense, how's it going? Is what you guys worked on and came up with, is it successful? It sounds like it is, it feels like it is, I just want to see, make sure.
Okay, we'll begin to work on a presentation for you.
There's, Mr. Hirons, there's one other element that goes along with that, and that's the change in scheduling at the high schools that will permit students that if they did not start the language until ninth grade to still get to whatever that uppermost level of that language is. So that, there's a piece there that we would want to share as well.
And that's something that I always explain, because I know I still get questions from constituents. Well, my kid can't take Latin in eighth grade. I don't mean to sound, you know, wrong about that, but it is, well, yes, there is opportunity for them to be able to in high school at the accelerated speed, I guess, lack of a better term. And so I just, you know, just with regards to middle school, I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing. We are having success there.
All right, thank you.
So I, you don't have to stay there, but I just have a comment on that. No, that's, you know, that's a good point. We, my, my oldest child was in the middle of, you know, the Latin, taking the Latin thing, and then he had the governor's school with the, so it was just hard to kind of fix, fix his schedule, and you know, and that happens, but I think we need to make sure that, and the counselors do a wonderful job, but it's not, when they go to these decent colleges, and when I say decent, I mean colleges that are accredited, and they want to see three to four years in the same language. So middle schoolers kind of have to make a, make a call, and that's UVA, and that's William &amp; Mary, and, and when they don't, as William &amp; Mary passed on to us, it was, all you need to do is just give me a note why your kid couldn't take the thing from your counselor, you know. So those are some of the pitfalls that if, we need to make sure we're steering the kids, and giving them the availability is fine, but we need to make sure that the kids are, kind of know these little tricks of the trade before they get into the position of getting these, you know, oh, heck, I got to go to the counselor now and get a memorandum from her, why we, you know, he tried, but he couldn't do it, or he didn't want to take virtual Virginia Latin V. Well, guess why? You know, it's, it was really, really tough, you know, so, anyway, that's just my.
Mr. McCosker, there's another element that I'll be asking Mr. Nichols to look into, and that's the methodology that's being used to build the master schedule at the school, and ensuring that we're using the technology that's available to us to place courses in the master schedule to absolutely minimize, you know, as many potential conflicts, particularly for courses that are singletons. And I'm just, I'm not convinced that we are leveraging the technology that's available to us at this point to help with that work.
Okay, just passing on some of my woes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? All right. All right, moving on to our Stafford County Public Schools rebranding and logo. I believe Ms. Johnson will be bringing that to us.
That'd be perfect camouflage if it was snowing outside, I would never see you.
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members, and Dr. Benson. Tonight, I would like to talk to you a little bit about a recommendation for a new school logo and tagline. The Office of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement has actually spearheaded this process. We've actually had several possibilities in the last few months, several rounds here. This is all a part of our rebranding process for Stafford County Public Schools, and our brand is our identity and our image for the school division. So the logo you see here, after several rounds, this is a logo that resonated with the most people. We had several rounds, and this one, people seemed to identify with. We had over eighty percent that voted for this, and many of the folks said that out of all the selections that they had, they liked this one the most. There's another example there for it. As you can see, we have the modern colors, and approximately about 500 people took the survey. Now, the logo is fresh, it's up to date and modern, moving the school division forward, which is what we want to do. Now, we will continue to honor our past while we continue to move forward into the future. We also have a sample of what the logo will look like on business cards, T-shirts, vehicles, division letterhead. As you can see, looks pretty good. Also looked pretty good on our website as well, our new website. The tagline that resonated with the most people is Inspire, Empower, and Excel. Now, the Office of Communicate, the Office of Strategic Communication and Community Engagement, sorry, I meant to say Communication Office, will also develop a style guide. Now, this will help ensure that the school division employees, that they use this in the proper form, you know, make sure they use the logo appropriately. And so this is what we have here. Have any questions?
Right. Any questions, comments?
The one question I have is, when we talked about this in work session, I thought we had also talked a little bit about the colors, and we wanted to see a version that used a color scheme similar or the color scheme that the Stafford County Wayfarer, Wayfinder signs use, the red, blue.
The government colors?
Yeah.
We actually did, this was our recommendation, but we certainly can bring it back using the government colors. We do have that.
This logo, this exact logo?
Yes, we have the logo in those colors. This is a recommendation that we were giving for the logo, but we can certainly, we can certainly bring it back in the other colors too.
So, yeah, that is something that the board is interested in. We can bring it, bring the other version back to the next meeting, and the board can decide which color scheme you'd like to formally adopt.
I just, I don't really ever see it in those colors, but I'm, I don't really, you know, it's something that I don't really care to hold the process up. If you guys are recommending it, then you probably have good reason, you're much more artistic than I am.
It will have to come back to the board, because we're bringing it for information tonight, so it will have to come back to the next meeting. So if that is something that you'd like us to do, we certainly can, because we have one.
We have it, yeah.
Do that.
I think.
I think so too. I think, I like, I like that. Just taking a look at, you know, one of our goals was to keep it tied to the county in some form or fashion as well, are one of our early goals or discussion points, and I think that was where we could capture that, whether it didn't look good or I don't know.
Okay. We can certainly bring it back and have both of them up there to take a look at.
Yep.
Okay.
Sherry, is this font consistent? I see on one of the slides here, we have Stafford County's in caps, and then it looks like the bottom's different, but then as we move down.
Right, we can make it consistent.
Well, I mean, it's more a question.
Yeah.
I just didn't know, I mean, is.
No, it's not.
I'm saying it's going to be consistent, but will the font be consistent as well?
Right, no, the Inspire, Empower, and Excel is a different font, but we can, we can make it the same as the Stafford County Public Schools.
Well, it's not so much that I'm saying it should be the same, it's just I find that on different slides here, they're different. So my question would be.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Will we see the same font in every place, or is the font going to be alternated depending on?
We'll have the same, we'll have the same font in every place, yes, and we'll have that in our style guide as well to ensure that.
Anything else? No? Okay. I would just like to say, though, I appreciate the work that's gone into this. I think we've really wanted to go into this rebranding effort, and I'm really excited that we're going to be moving in that direction. I think, like we said, we'll see it with the other ones, and we will talk, see it in two weeks, and we'll move forward.
Madam Chair, oh, no, I have nothing for you, Sherry.
Thank you.
I have one point of privilege, I would have just asked, could we look, maybe Dr. Benson, give us a better date? Can we sit down and look at the, as young Ms. Wallach had pointed out about the dress code? Can we take some time, maybe this summer, and just kind of put it on the?
And we can talk about the retreat too, like a timeline of different projects.
Maybe a retreat, yeah, maybe at the retreat, we can talk about the timeline and give us a back brief on, hey, if we reverse plan this, we have to talk about it.
We do, because we would have to include that as a part of student code of conduct.
Right.
So there's a timeline we would have to hit if we were going to make a change that would go into effect for the 2017, '18 school year.
So the 21 January meeting, just a reverse timeline would be, I think, if the board agrees, a reverse timeline to say, hey, this is when we need a decision from you all about X, Y, Z, that would, that would get the ball rolling.
Yeah, I think that'd be great, so we have some idea.
I just want to understand the issues, that's all. I just want to understand the issues, that's all.
All right. Moving on to our closed session, 8.01. Mr. Hirons, can you read us in?
Wait a minute.
Uh-huh.
You are now.
You now get to read it.
Read it.
Read it. All right, well, let's see, do I have the right, uh?
You do, you just have to click.
Got to learn how to do this. Okay. Move that the school board, go, move that pursuant to section 2.2-3711A of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Stafford County School Board convene a closed meeting to discuss two personnel matters pursuant to the personnel exemption at section 2.23711A1 and legal matter pursuant to the legal exemption at section 2.2-377A7 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We are in closed session.